You're gonna broadcast?
Correct, we were in practice mode, so I'm gonna go. It should be open, it should be open now to anyone who's trying to attend.
I get you. Are you all set?
Yes, sir.
I see the recording. Okay, good, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is the Braintree Zoning Board of Appeals via Zoom. So the petitions will be heard this evening. Can, will be conducted remotely via Zoom in accordance with Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order. Said order suspended the provisions of the open meeting law to promote public health and social distancing. This public hearing will not be conducted in an open, publicly accessible place. Instead, public access to the hearing and deliberations will be achieved by adequate alternative means that allow the public to follow the proceeding in a third-party communications technology that is readily accessible to the public via the internet and telephone. And on the agenda notice is given the, the dial-up number and the code ID. So we have several, seven petitions tonight. And we take them up as they, in the order in which they have printed up on our agenda unless someone notified either myself or Connor that they had some other place they had to be, however, with what's going on, I don't see, I haven't heard anybody that has another appointment they have to get to, so we'll take them up on the, in the order that we have them. The first petition is petition 20-18, 19 Shepherd Road. Edward Chung, is Mr. Chung here?
President.
Where are you?
I'm right here.
I see you, okay, thank you. He's the applicant for relief from bylaw requirements under chapter 135, 403 and 135, 701 for the construction of a two-story addition with a footprint of 380 square feet. The applicant seeks a finding to construct a two-story addition as the existing single-family dwelling has a non-conforming side yard setback of 6.8 feet. And the proposed addition will have a side yard setback of 7.3 feet, where 10 feet is required. The property is located at 19 Shepherd Road, Braintree, Mass. In its own Residence B, as shown on assessor's map, 1045 Plot 52A, with a land area of 6,544 square feet. Sitting on this petition will be myself, Mr. Ford, Mr. McDonough. The alternate will be Mr. Burke. And by the way, I forgot to introduce the members of the zoning board. So I can't, it's hard for me to tell where they are on everyone's screen. But we have Mike Ford, Tim Burke, and Richard McDonough. My name is Stephen Carl, I'm the chairman. And we, we're hoping that the other member, Gary Walker, would, would join us or appear. But we, we haven't heard that he wasn't, so we'll wait.
I'm texting him right now, so.
And Tim Burke as well, Chairman.
Huh?
Tim Burke.
Yeah, I mentioned Tim.
Okay, sorry.
I would never leave him out intentionally. Did you get that, Tim?
I got it, I got it.
I'm satisfied that the abutters and the abutters to the abutters within 300 feet have been duly notified. We have a recommendation of the planning board, and they voted to follow the staff recommendation, which was favorable on this petition. We'll hear from, we'll hear from the petitioner and/or your representative, sir. Who's going to speak?
I'm David, my name is David St. Germain, I am the contractor.
Okay, Mr. St. Germain, go ahead.
So, we're just looking for relief to be able to support the addition.
You're gonna have to speak, get a little closer or speak a little louder.
It's, it's a growing family that needs more space, and we're just hoping we're able to be able to construct this addition for them. And I know it's impeding on the 10-foot setback, but that's why we're trying to get this relief granted.
Well, I see you're going to put a second-story addition on, is that correct?
Correct.
And you're going to follow the, the lot line, the roof line of the house. You're gonna stay within the footprint of the house.
Right, everything staying exactly the same way. We're not impeding any further than what the main house is now on the side setback.
Well, the only, the only, which I thought, the only issue I saw was that the step, the steps on the proposed deck is coming out the side instead of the rear of the deck.
Correct, it was going towards the driveway?
Yeah.
In the back.
That's to make it easier for access to the house?
Yeah, so as they get out of their cars bringing groceries in, that's the, the back entrance that goes into the kitchen. That will be the back entrance that goes through the kitchen.
And usually, Mr. Chung is the one that's carrying the groceries, correct?
Yes, it is.
All right, so we like to make it easy for, for Mr. Chung, I guess, and/or his wife.
Right, we would appreciate it.
I can't I don't see anything else. Mike, do you have any questions of the petitioner?
No, sir, pretty straightforward.
Richard, do you?
No questions this time, no.
All right, Tim, do you wanna say anything?
Nope, I'm good, thanks.
All right, Gary, good evening.
Oh, are you, sorry, I was having a hard time getting on, I apologize.
You don't have to apologize, I understand when it comes to computers and the hard time it can give you. So, welcome, we're glad you're here. But you see, you see Mr. Walker dressed up for this occasion. Put a tie on.
I'll take it off.
Yeah, that'll feel better with that, yeah, that'll be good. All right, so as, as of right now, we don't have any further questions, Mr. St. Germain.
Okay.
Connor, is there, well, is there anyone in favor online that wants to record themselves?
If there's anyone in the audience who has any questions, could they please raise their hand on the Zoom, and I will allow you to talk. I'll give it for the next minute, see if anyone does.
Okay.
I don't see anyone raising their hands, sir, no.
Okay, is there anyone in opposition?
I don't see anyone raising their hands, sir.
Okay, so we have no opposition. All right, last chance before I close the hearing. I know that trying to get acknowledged on Zoom can be a little difficult. Last chance, anyone listening, no? Okay, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll open it up for discussion. Mike or Rich, any, any, any discussion?
No.
One, one way or the other?
This is pretty straightforward. I would, I would make a motion to approve based on submitted plans and to follow staff's recommendations.
Second, second.
Okay, a motion's been made and seconded to approve your petition, sir, subject to the plans that you filed with the conditions that the staff tax on to all the positive recommendations that aren't of a complex nature. And there six of them. Do you have any questions on the, on these six conditions that are pretty straightforward as far as they go?
What, what are the six conditions? Do we, did we get a copy of that? I don't believe we received anything.
I, I, sir, I provided a staff report to Mr. Chung on Friday.
Oh, okay. Okay, it's an attachment.
Correct, yep.
Okay. Okay. I would like to, I would like to add a seventh, that if you have a cookout, you get Pearl hot dogs and invite everybody on the screen. That being said, okay. A motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Oh, I get Connor, we gotta take a roll call, right?
Yes, please, sir.
All right, Mike Ford?
Aye.
Rich McDonough?
Aye.
Steve Carl, aye. Sir, your petition is approved. If you have any questions as, as how you go about getting the permit, the app, permit application, you do have to wait until at least it's filed and signed, and you know how to do that, right?
Yeah, I've worked with the town for probably the last 15 years on doing this, so.
And you're still working with the town, really?
Yeah.
I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
I know.
All right, your petition is approved, sir. Good luck.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Okay, the next petition is 20-19. 550 Liberty Street. Ashley Jimenez of Sign Design Incorporated, applicant for relief from bylaw requirements under chapter 135, 407, 135, 904.2, and 135, 904.3 for installation of an 18.72 foot by 7.61 foot, total 142.46 square foot ground sign. The applicant seeks a variance as the proposed ground sign is located within a commercial zone and exceeds the requirements for a ground sign. The property is located at 550 Liberty Street, Braintree, Mass. And is zoned commercial, as shown on assessor's map, 1125 Plot 117, and has an area of 50.6 plus or minus acres. Sitting on this petition will be myself, Mr. Ford. And where's Mr. Walker? Mr. Walker. The alternate will be Mr. Burke. Okay, I'm satisfied that the abutters in, in the abutters to the abutters within 300 feet have been duly notified. Recommendation of the planning board. The planning board endorsed this, endorsed the staff recommendation, which was approval with the, with two conditions. We'll hear from the representative and/or the petitioner and/or their representative.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening, thank you for your time. My name is Scott Farino from Sign Design in Brockton, Mass. I'm here with Mike Colari from Sign Design and Ryan Confree from Lenox Farm in UDR. And basically, what we're doing here is replacing an existing sign with a new one, as the existing sign was dilapidated and structurally unsound. So this is just a new sign to replace the previous sign. The size is the same. And the location is the same, it's just a replacement.
Somewhere I saw a picture of it. Mr. Ford, do you have any questions?
I have, just one if I may, it's the same height as the existing sign, is that true?
That is correct.
Oh, here it is, Mr. Walker?
I have no questions.
Are you still building, you don't know, do you, if they're still building in there?
That I don't know.
No. No, we're not building in there.
No?
That build-out's been complete a long time, Steve.
Oh, I know, I thought they had more acreage in there. I guess not.
It's wet.
They had a, there are replicated wetlands in there, I know, I, I believe. So there's a lot of unusable, unbuildable land on that site.
That's correct.
Okay. Well, I don't have any questions, so. And I, Mr. Ford doesn't, he asked his. Mr. Walker didn't. So we'll open it up to anyone else that's in favor. In the, in the cyberspace, is anyone in favor?
I don't see anyone with their hand raised, sir, no.
Okay, is there anyone opposed? No one?
Nope.
Nope.
No opposition? Then we'll close the public hearing and open it up for discussion. Is there any discussion? Mike or Gary, any discussion?
Then I would, I'd make a motion to approve based on the submitted plans and with staff's recommendations.
Motion's been made, and Mr. Walker, do you second that?
I second it.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Roll call vote, Mr. Ford?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Steve Carl, aye. Your petition is approved, sir. Is this sign gonna be a little more permanent than the last one?
Yes, it will.
Will it hold up a little better?
Yes, it will.
Okay, good luck there, sir, you're all set.
Thank you very much.
Next petition is 20-20, 227 Hayward Street. Neil Crossman, applicant for relief from bylaw requirements under chapter 135, 403, 135, 701, and 135, 707 to construct a second-story addition with dormers over the non-conforming front yard setback and the non-conforming rear yard setback. The applicant seeks a finding as the existing single-family dwelling has a non-conforming front yard setback of eight feet, where 20 feet is required, and a non-conforming rear yard setback of 18.2 feet, where 30 feet is required. The property is located at 227 Hayward Street, Braintree, Mass. And is zoned Residence B, as shown on assessor's map, 3051 Plot 5, with a land area of 7,937 square feet. Sitting on this petition will be myself, Mr. Ford, Mr. Burke. The alternate will be Mr. McDonough. I'm satisfied that the abutters and the abutters to the abutters within 300 feet have been duly notified. The recommendation of the planning board. If I can find them. Is, is, is this approved, this is favorable, Connor?
Yes, it is, sir, yep.
Recommendations of the planning board are following the staff recommendations of approval. There are six conditions that the planning board has added, which are the usual conditions that they add. We'll hear from the petitioner and/or his representative. Where's the petitioner?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. So basically, our plans are just to add a true second story to the existing house. Basically, putting all three bedrooms on the second story. Doing an open floor plan on the first floor. We will not be changing anything on the footprint of the actual home. We're gonna raise the ridge line about 2 foot 10, just to give it a little more height headroom on the second story. It's pretty, pretty standard construction. That, that's really about it. I appreciate it, we're just gonna try to clean up the neighborhood, make a little more room for our future family that's coming, coming along, and that's about it.
Are you, are you going to be doing some of the work?
I will be doing most of the interior work. And I have a contractor who will be doing the framing for the roof and the siding and the doors and the dormer.
Just curiosity, are you a carpenter?
Yes, I am.
It's nice when you can do that, I can't bang a nail. Okay, let's see if we have any questions. Any questions, Mike?
No, sir, this is, this is almost adding half a floor, this is, this is pretty minimal as far as additions are concerned. I think this is pretty straightforward also.
Tim, where are you, where'd you go?
I'm still here.
Oh, there you are, okay. You have any questions?
No, I have none, this is like Mr. Ford said, it's pretty straightforward.
Are you adding a bathroom, master bathroom upstairs, sir?
Not a master bath, but just a regular full bathroom upstairs, correct.
You better find one for yourself if you're having children and.
Unfortunately, we don't have the, the space, I don't think, to add a full master bath and a regular bathroom for the children, but maybe down the road.
Well, you better get one somewhere where you can lock yourself in. All right, I don't have any questions either, sir. Connor, I'm gonna ask if there's anyone else in favor?
I don't see anyone with their hand raised, no.
Is there anyone in opposition?
Nope.
I see, there being no one in further favor or opposition, we'll close the public hearing and we'll open it up for discussion. Any discussion from any of the board members? Mike?
No, sir. I'd make a motion to approve based on the submitted plans and staff's recommendations.
Tim?
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded, sir. We'll call the roll, Mr. Ford, Mike Ford?
Aye.
Aye.
Tim Burke?
Aye.
Steve Carl, aye. Good luck, sir.
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
I want you to write it down, I recommend that you get yourself a bathroom.
All right, I'll, I'll keep that in mind.
In about 10 years, I want you to remember I said that.
I will, I will, I already know it now, so I appreciate that, sir.
Okay.
Have a good night.
You're welcome. All right, the next petition, 20-21 for Pinecrest Road. Nicole Hamilton. Is she here? Oh, there you are. Applicant for relief from bylaw requirements under chapter 135, 135, 403, 135, 701, 135, 707 to construct a second-story addition. Wow, they're, they're going like hotcakes this month. Over a non-conforming side yard setback and a non-conforming rear yard setback. The applicant seeks a finding as the existing single-family dwelling has a non-conforming side yard setback of 5.2 feet, where 10 feet is required, and an existing rear yard setback of 18.9 feet, where 30 feet is required. The property is located at 4 Pinecrest Road, Braintree, Mass. And is zoned Residence B, as shown on assessor's map, 2085 Plot 43, with a land area of 7,770 square feet. Sitting on this petition will be myself, Mr. Ford, Mr. McDonough. The alternate will be Mr. Walker. The recommendation of the planning board. The staff recommended approval, and the planning board went along with the staff recommendation. The planning board had six of their usual conditions. I, have you seen them, petitioner? Have you seen the, the conditions that the planning board added on, six of them?
Yes, we have.
Okay, they, they're the usual petitions? One of which, one of which I usually have an issue with, I mean, I don't particularly care for about the windows and the paint and all that, but but they're, they're not too onerous usually on, on the petitioner, so we'll go, we'll go from there. And we'll hear from the petitioner and/or their representative. Yes, who's going to speak?
I will, good evening, Chairman and the board, I appreciate everybody taking the time tonight. I'm Gordon Egan, this is my wife Nicole Egan, we're recently married, which is why the applicant still says Nicole Hamilton, something we're working on. As you can see, where the goal is to put a second floor on our home. Currently, it's a single ranch, we're not planning on expanding footprint by any means, we're planning on just going straight up. The goal is to just, again, make some more room for us and our family, and then bring some value to the property and the neighborhood. And also, it'd be nice to have a house big enough to host everybody down here over for some hot dogs and a cookout.
Pearl, Pearl hot dog, sure.
No, I wouldn't, I wouldn't give you anything but.
You caught on pretty quickly. Okay. Well, basically, this is a finding of not more detrimental to the neighborhood as the others have been. So are there any questions, Mike, from you?
No, not at all, this is a, and they do have a master bath here, Steve, and a nice big walk-in closet to boot, so. This is quite the addition.
Yeah, but do you have a lock on your door so you can lock yourself in? That's the key.
I've got a deadbolt on there.
That'll work, I think. Richie, do you have any questions?
No, no questions at all.
Tim or Gary, you wanna add anything?
No, I'm fine.
Gary?
I have nothing to add, thank you.
Okay. I have no other questions. This, this must be the month for second-story additions.
Well, everybody's, everybody's been staying inside so long, they've, they need to spread out a little bit to
Yeah.
To get some distance away from each other.
And quite honestly, I'm glad people wanna stay in this town, so. And this is one way of doing it, so. I guess it says something for the town. And I have no questions either. Connor, anyone, anyone else in favor?
Oh, we have one hand raised, let me forward.
Jennifer B?
Yes, that's me.
Okay, okay, me, you raised your hand in favor, what do you wanna, how would you like to respond?
I am a neighbor across the street, and I support this project.
Thank you very much, Jennifer, did you have trouble getting on Zoom? Did you have trouble getting on Zoom?
No, I was pretty good.
Well, that's good to hear. Thank you, Jennifer.
No problem, thank you.
Can I just have your address real quick for the record, please?
Sure, it's 121 Lawnview Drive.
Thank you very much.
No problem.
Is there anyone else that wishes to record themselves in favor? No one else, Connor?
Nope, I don't see anyone.
Okay, is there anyone in opposition? Anyone in opposition?
Nope.
Hands? Okay, we'll close that portion of the hearing and open it up for discussion. Any discussion, Mike or Richie?
Nothing to add on these, you know, there's, thank goodness, I'll say this for the record now, but not for this in particular. The Zoom meetings are working out because we really haven't had anything controversial in front of us. So I think that's, that's been helpful. And this, this is case in point. There's, there's not a lot of controversy here or a lot of heavy, heavy lifting with this particular petition. I would make a motion to approve based on staff's recommendation and submitted plans.
Motion seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve your, your petition subject to the plans with the staff recommendations. Call the roll, Mr. Ford.
Sorry, aye.
Richie?
Aye.
Steve Carl, aye. Congratulations. Hope everything works out for you and good luck, sir.
Thanks again, everybody.
And congratulations on your recent marriage.
Thank you so much.
Good luck.
Thanks.
Mike, just think if we had a 40B, we'd have to get eight computers lined up in the office.
Absolutely. I was, I was actually losing sleep over that when that was first filed. So I'm glad they, they settled that.
Yeah, so am I. Okay, the next petition is petition 20-22, 1515 Washington Street, Fox Rock 1500 Campus Realty LLC, applicant for relief and bylaw requirements on the chapter 135-407, 135-509, 135-701, 135-806, 135-808, 135-809E, and 135-812D for installation of 27 parking spaces. The applicant seeks a variance as the proposed parking spaces will create an increase in the site's lot coverage from 74.5 to 75.1 and will decrease the site's open space from 25.5 to 24.9% where the maximum lot coverage allowed is 70 and the minimum open space allowed is 30. The property is located at 1515 Washington Street, Braintree, in its own highway business watershed, as shown on a Cessers map, 1053 Plot 121, with a land area of 13.98 acres. I'm satisfied that the abutters and the abutters to the abutters within 300 feet have been duly notified. Recommendation of the planning board. Oh, I, I forgot to announce the members. I will do that right after this. The recommendation of the planning board. Mr. Hanis recused himself from voting. All right, Connor, where did you hide the recommendation?
The recommendation is, 1, 2, 3, is the fourth line. A variance noted in a motion of approval recommended by staff condition on the following is part of the motion.
All right, so the staff recommendation of approval was endorsed by the planning board and the planning board added four conditions that I see sitting on this petition will be myself, Mr. Ford, Mr. McDonough, and the alternate will be Mr. Walker. I tell you, it's, it's not every day we see people adding parking spaces, although it is decreasing the open space, but. Okay, we'll hear from the petitioner and/or their representative.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Frank Marinelli, pleased to appear on behalf of Fox Rock Properties this evening. The application, as stated, Mr. Chairman, is for de minimis relief. It's 0.6% from the open space and up 0.6% on lot coverage just to add the 27 parking spaces, which overall will be an improvement to the business park. We should also point out, as shown on the C1 Tetra Tech Plan, that when you consider the entire business park, we, we take away about, we add about 3,800 square feet of pavement, but we, we also take away 3,900 on other areas of the business park. So overall, in the business park, this application is a wash. But as concerns 1515, which is where the spaces themselves are located, it's, it's a, it's a de minimis 0.6% relief from open space and an additional 0.6 for the lot coverage. So that's kind of the backdrop of it. 1515 Washington Street is an approximate 14-acre commercial property. It's located in the Highway Business District. It has watershed protection overlay. The building is approximately 270,000 square feet itself, which is over six acres of the site. The building conform to zoning when constructed. Most of the building is built out as warehouse with tenants under Fox Rock's ownership. We were able to get the lottery to locate there in 2019. We also have a nonprofit, Good Sports, Good Sports, that is there. We have Iron Mountain, South Shore Elder Services. So it's a, a re-vitalized office, office and business park under Fox Rock's ownership. Fox Rock, by way of background, acquired the property in 2018. Fox Rock and its related entities have developed a diverse portfolio of properties comprising over 3 million square feet of medical, office, and industrial space on the South Shore. So they're one of the region's premier owners of commercial properties and managers of commercial property. They also own, just by way of background, 350 Granite Street, 55 Messina Drive, and, and this business park. The business park itself has four properties. 1501, when you come up Braxton Street and take a right, there's that office building that abuts the golf course, which is now occupied by Aspire Health. The zoning board was involved in the reuse of that property, which has been beneficial to the town. And then you have 1505, which is next to that. And then you have this building and property 1515. And then in back of this property to the west, you have 1525, which is Hub Pen. So with me tonight is Matt Galt. Matt is Fox Rock's Director of Asset Management. And also with us is Glenn Doherty of Tetra Tech, who prepared the site plan. So we're, we're happy to answer any questions that you might have. Basically, if you refer to the C1 site plan, you'll see that Tetra Tech has creatively used that area to the north of the 1515 building, which was pretty much wasted and said, well, you know, we could fit some extra parking in here if we bump out the northeast corner and create these parking spaces along the northerly side of the building and a few, I think, eight spaces on the easterly side of the building. So it results in 27 additional parking spaces. The site right now complies with parking. It has 283 parking spaces. This would bring us up to 310. It would allow for the final end cap unit to be leased if we can find a tenant. Hopefully, we will under these circumstances that we're all working under these days. By, so that's the onsite parking. The onsite parking would be 310 with this improvement of 27 spaces. We think the improvement far outweighs any de minimis relief that we're requesting. I should also point out that we have by easement another 100 spaces that are down in front on the Thera Academy property. But our, our intent here is to, you know, contain as many parking spaces onsite as we can within the requirements of the bylaw. So that is the request, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. The staff report is favorable and we've read, you know, the boilerplate conditions are certainly acceptable. The, the relief that we're requesting is set forth in the, in the staff report. It is the 0.6 of 1% variance from the open space. It's the 0.6 1% variance from lot coverage. It's the design relief on the parking spaces, which have a landscape requirement that really, as, as has been explained in the, in the staff report, you know, this is a, a built-out business park. Some of those requirements came in long after this, this building was built, as did the watershed protection district came in after, long after this building was built. We would also ask, you know, and on, on that, the, the parking design requirements were a minimum 10-foot-wide landscaped strip and a minimum 5% of the gross area and off, off, off-street parking shall be landscaped. So, you know, those really were the type of after-adopted requirements in, in, in commercial properties long after this property was built as a Walworth facility. In addition to the, the variance relief, we are asking that you also find, you make a finding that the, this, this property is a non-conforming property with the improvement that we're making under 486. This would not be substantially more detrimental, but would in fact be an improvement. The only finding you really have to make is that it's not substantially more detrimental, but we respectfully submit that this is an overall improvement. It's a type of investment we wanna see in commercial properties and particularly fortunate to have a company like Fox Rock own and manage this, this business park. So if, if there's any questions, we're, we're happy to answer them. Thank you.
How close, how close to the golf course are they?
They're, they're, they're.
Are they abutting the golf course?
No, no, they're on the, well, they're on the northerly side of the building. And they're on the, the, the golf course is far west. So these parking spaces are on the northerly side. And really, on the, on the northerly side, they abut the 1505 building and actually, and they, they abut Braxton Street as it goes back to the 1525 building.
I just wanted to know if I could look for some loose balls that were hit there because I'm, I'm always losing money. Okay, no, I'm joking. I just want, okay, that, very well. Thank you for presenting that, Frank. Mike, any questions?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. The attorney, Ms. Marinelli, mentioned that he was looking for a variance on this. Do we need a variance on this or is this a finding?
So I, I think it's both, Mr. Ford, and you know, I think it's a Rockwood case that says in a case where you've got a non-conforming property and, you know, the watershed came in after the fact and required 30% open space and, and so forth. So because we're presently non-conforming and under the requirements, when you, even if you go 0.6% more, you need a variance as well. So you need both. And, you know, thank you for pointing that out because the, on the variance part of it, the, the lot is irregularly shaped and the topography slopes from, from west to east, you know, is a pretty steep climb there. As, as you know, from going out there on Braxton Street, you, you can see the topographical differences and that's been cited in the staff report.
Okay, thank you.
Richie, any questions?
No.
Gary or Tim, do you wanna ask anything?
I don't wanna ask a question. I just know that, I, I think we've reviewed this property several times over the, the last couple of years.
We have.
And I know it's, it's a property that, you know, obviously provides a lot of jobs for the residents of Braintree. And I just look at this, even though they're losing some open space, providing more parking. It has very little detriment to the neighborhood. There's not a lot of abutters other than the golf course, like you already said. Seems to me like it's pretty straightforward.
Thank you. Gary, Tim, do you want to say anything?
I, I have a question on the, Connor, I'm looking at the, the handout that you gave us, the petition, the lap page, the picture on the, of the side of the, the building that has 1525.
Yep.
Is that where the, the spaces are going in?
Correct, yep. So they're gonna be retrofitting that area to allow for the 27 parking spaces, the sidewalk, and some minor landscaping.
Okay, because it looks like there's some drainage underneath the walkways that, that are up there. And I'm, I'm assuming, you know, that the tenants are gonna be addressing any drainage issues on the property.
Correct. And they'll also have to go through the planning board for some type of modification to their original permitting. And the permitting that they have with the planning board, we consider it called site plan review. Site plan review does encompass drainage, utilities, parking, access, all the above.
All right, great, thank you.
What does Freeman do, the company that's in there?
So that's an old photograph, I think, that Freeman has vacated. That's actually the space that's owned, that's occupied by Good Sports presently. And Good Sports, you know, Good Sports takes in donations of sports equipment and, and then distributes it to impoverished children that cannot afford to buy sports equipment. So Good Sports is in that section now.
They do a good deed.
Yeah.
It sure do.
Freeman used to do trade show exhibits, Steve, all over the country. They, they were, they were a big operation. I don't know if they're still around or not. Just on a side note, you mentioned that you were hoping to lease the, the space that's left in that building. What's the square footage in that building? That's available.
Yeah, Frank, and sorry, just one quick correction. So the, the Freeman picture that you're looking at, that is actually that, excuse me, that end cap space, that's the vacant space. Good Sports is one over. That vacant space, sir, is about 63,000 square feet, including about 7,000 or 8,000 of office in the front.
Sorry about that.
No, no, that's okay, Frank.
My, my, my other life, my other job, I, I come across people looking for space all the time. So I'm always curious what's available.
There it is, the photograph, right there.
That's how Adelson got started, Mike, doing trade shows. And he ended up building casinos all over the world. Okay, are there any other questions? No, seeing none. Is there anyone else in favor? Anyone outside, anyone in cyberspace in favor?
No, sir.
No? Is there anyone out there in opposition?
No, sir.
No?
No.
Okay. We'll close that portion of the hearing and we'll open it up for discussion. Any discussion, members?
No, sir.
No.
Would someone like to make a motion?
I would make a motion to, to a, to approve the variance based on shape of the lot and the topography of the lot and to make a finding that it's not more detrimental to the neighborhood based on submitted plans and staff's recommendations.
Second the motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. We'll call the roll, Mr. Ford.
Aye.
Mr. McDonough?
Aye.
Steve Carl, aye. And gentlemen, if you come across any pro V ones or anything? And gentlemen, if you come across any Pro V ones or anything like that, Mr. Marinelli can tell you that I lose a ton of them.
I do as well. Understood.
And I only play twice a year.
If you're losing a ton of balls like that, you should not be hitting Pro V ones, Steve.
Riding range ball.
All right, gentlemen, good luck up there. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Have a great night.
Good night.
Okay, next petition is petition petition number 2023. Thomas Holster applicant for relief from bylaw requirements under chapter 135, 402, 135, 403, 135, 701 for the construction of a second story addition with dormers over a nonconforming side yard setback. The applicant seeks a finding as the existing single family dwelling has a side yard setback of 7.4 feet and 10 feet is required. I'm hearing an echo.
I believe it's Mr.
It's what? The property is located at 27 St. Michael Road, Braintree, in a zone residence B, as shown on assessors map, plot 1062, plot 114, with a land area of 7,980 square feet. Are the petitioners here, Mr. Holder?
Mr. Chairman?
You represent them?
Can you hear me, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, it's a little broken up, but yeah.
I just turned down my speaker so that apparently you're receiving.
Actually, Kyle, I'm not through yet, but it's not coming across clear. So sitting on this matter will be myself, Mr. Walker, Mr. Burke. The alternate will be Mr. Ford. I'm satisfied that the abutters and the abutters to the abutters within 300 feet have been duly notified. Recommendation of the planning board and the staff is approval with five standard additions of the planning board added on. We'll hear from the petitioner and or their representative. Mr. Johnson?
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, correct, my name is Paul Johnson, representing the partners in Catherine Holder.
Not good.
Is this any better?
Somewhat, but greatly better.
Okay. Well, I'm just going to have to go through this and maybe echo and I'm sorry, we were having some technical assistance from Mr. Murphy today. We're trying to resolve the issue. Apparently, so I could have been on the phone contact to be clear, but I'll be brief.
Mr. Johnson, I'm clearly not coming across very well. I'm wondering if you could call in and we'll wait for your call in.
Steve, you sound like the announcer at Fenway Park.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen.
Talking to nobody, right, Mike? Today?
Yeah.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, boys and girls, open to Fenway Park. Absolutely.
Mr. Chairman? That's better. Is that better? Lot better.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I apologize. I thought I thought we rectified it and I'm under some technical difficulty. I am over the age of 70, so I think that accounts for some of it. Sure does. In case number 20 dash 23, Thomas and Catherine Holder, the premises 27 St. Michael Road, and as the chairman indicated, the relief sought is that the proposed alteration by adding a shed dormer to the front and a window dormer to the rear of the roof is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. This house was constructed in 1935 as a one and a half story Cape dwelling that is a preexisting, validly preexisting and nonconforming structure. The existing lot is 50 feet wide and 160 feet deep. The petitioner purchased the dwelling in May of 2020, having moved from Staten Road in Braintree proper to this property. The prior owners, George and Nunziato and Cameron Lombardo, added a dimensionally conforming addition to the rear of the Cape dwelling and received zoning relief from the Board of Appeals, as shown on a plan entitled 20, proposed addition to 27 Michael Road that was dated in January 1993. A copy of the case, 1876 of 1993, and the decision was submitted with the application. I think it's important because what is proposed, if you look at the current plot plan that shows where the addition would be, as well as the architectural drawings that shows the shed dormers, this is not a full second level. It is increases it so that there will be two bedrooms upstairs and a bathroom, existing the expanding the existing bedroom and providing another one. That's the reason for the shed dormers. And the bathroom is being added in the rear, so that's why there is a window dormer in the rear. I want to point out that the relief granted 1993 was both a finding of no substantially not more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing dwelling, as well as uniquely the board granted a variance because of the topographical conditions of the lot as it goes from the street to the rear of the lot. And the reason that that was important, technically, that means that there was a variance that indicated that the property conformed. But be that as it may, this addition on the dormers does not intensify any nonconforming setback aspect of the of the property. And in fact, is does expand, does not exceed the height of the existing story and a half roof. So it was our opinion early on that this did not require any zoning relief. That's because chapter 48, section 6, as well as our bylaw 403c, indicates that there's a certain special protection for one and two family dwellings and that if there's not an intensification of an existing nonconformity, then the building inspector can issue a permit for the construction. That's why you see some of these before you. And I think, as the chairman pointed out in another matter, that it's important in Braintree that our zoning ordinance is geared to the building footprint and not the cubic content of a building. If you expand, if a building is a conforming building is on a nonconforming lot, you're still required to receive a variance if you're going to extend it and further encroach into that any any side yard rear or front setback. Or if you're expanding the second level and you're exceeding the height, you can still do that extension without a variance because it's a one and two family dwelling, unlike the commercial property that you just heard presented by Mr. Marinelli. So that this matter was, I submitted a memo on it and I know that John Goldrosen also submitted something back. And as a result of that, we filed this petition. I don't think we we under law, particularly under the Bellotta case, indicate unless you have cubic content in your bylaw as a measure of for dwellings and occupation that the internal configuration of a dwelling is something is protected. Be that as it may, because Mr. Goldrosen has indicated we needed the relief, building inspector indicated the dormers required relief, we're submitting the relief and believe that it is not substantially more detrimental and would ask for your support for a finding to that effect. Can I ask a dumb question, Carl?
It's not pretty dumb if you're asking it.
Well, I'm just curious as to why they didn't add a whole second floor and they're only going with a shed dormer and a dormer with them.
I think they have a issue back. Mr. Holder is 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 an attendee to this. He can answer it.
I'm just wondering if it's financial because we've had several other second story additions, as you know, tonight, several. And Mr. Holder, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
And it has no bearing one way or the other. I'm just curious as to why you didn't add a whole second floor addition as opposed to the dormers.
Well, we didn't feel that we didn't need that much space. We didn't want to take away from the character of the house because we think it's cute kind of as it is. And yeah, we didn't need to spend any more money than we felt necessary.
That's I can't ask for a better answer than that. Thank you, sir.
And I think that before before Mr. Chairman, before Mr. Holder purchased the property, they had that 93 addition in the rear part of it that also gave them room. This and also a garage under in the back because of the topography, they were able to take advantage of that as well. So they may still have a cookout, though, even though it's not a second addition.
Who who signed who signed the variance back in back in the day?
You did, and I would
Can't be wrong, Mike.
If you want, huh?
No, I was gonna I telling Mr. Ford it can't be wrong if I signed it.
It was Mr. Nightingale, Mr. Lee, and Mr. Carl.
That goes back away, huh?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, sir. Gary, Tim, do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions. It seems pretty straightforward to me. It's obviously a smaller home and like I say, you probably use the added space.
Tim, any questions?
Yeah, no, that like I said earlier, this is, these are all pretty straightforward tonight.
Thank you, sir. Mike, Richie, any questions?
No. None, no.
No, sir.
No. Okay. Is there anyone else in favor? Raise raise your hand in cyberspace.
Nope.
No, obviously, Mr. Holder, you are. Okay, is there anyone opposed?
Nope.
I see no opposition or Connor sees no opposition. So we'll close that portion of the hearing and open it up for discussion. Is there any further discussion?
I have more discussion.
Okay, does somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve with the recommended with the staff recommendations.
I'll second that.
Been made and seconded to approve the petition as presented with a finding that it's not more detrimental to the neighborhood than already exists and with the staff proposed conditions added on all well, let me do the roll call. Mr. Burke?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Steve Carl?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson, for presenting the matter. Thank you, Mr. Holder.
Chairman.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Okay, the last petition. Josh Baker of BNA Construction LLC, applicant for relief from bylaw requirements under chapter 135, 407, and 135, 701 for construction of a seven foot by 25.6 foot, 179.2 square feet, enclosed front porch in a four foot by 10.8 foot, 43.2 square feet landing and stairs. The applicant seeks a variance as the proposed improvements will create a deficient front yard setback of 6.4 feet where 10 is required and a deficient side yard setback of nine feet where 10 is required. The property is located at 16-18 River Street, Braintree, in a zoned general business district as shown on assessors map, 2024, plot 27A. It has a land area of 7,913 square feet. Sitting on this petition will be myself, Mr. Ford, Mr. McDonough. The alternate would be Mr. Walker. Recommendation of the planning board. The applicant's proposal is modesty intentions, how to keep existing existing building roughly the same. Construction of the front porch is to provide an increase of office space so employees can maintain social distancing. The building has remained office for quite some time, will continue to be in office. In regards to the variance, the applicant has not provided a hardship pursuant to Mass General laws 48, section 10. Staff recommends favorable action pending the board's input and analysis. They have provided six, if it's approved, six conditions. We'll hear from the petitioner and or their representative. We have a letter from Public Guardian Services. Public Guardian Services is at 16 River Street. As the head office of our important public service to the community, PGS provides guardianship and conservatorship services to mass residents who are decisionally impaired. All PGS clients have a disability, be it physical disability, suffering from cognitive impairment, or some form of mental illness impacting their ability to manage their daily lives. P G I, I'm skipping as I go along, I'm not reading the whole letter. The creation of an accessible and community based office space is of the utmost importance, allowing our client to have access to the support and guidance that PGS provides. PGS is thrilled to be developing a nonprofit in Braintree and are appreciative of the support received from the community. And then it's signed sincerely, Sandy Hovey, Executive Director. So we'll, yeah, Sandy? Thank you, sir. We'll hear from the petitioner and or their representative.
Thank you, gentlemen, of the of the
Thank you, gentlemen of the, of the board. We certainly appreciate your, your time this evening. And if all goes well, I have a package of Pearl hot dogs for you.
Everybody's, they're catching on.
And I hit Pro V1, so I have a full flat for you. Mister Carl?
Takes more than that, really, for me.
All right, there's a round of golf in it for you as well.
A couple of lessons, we know. Okay, go ahead, sir. Mister Becker, go on.
Well, my name is Joshua Becker. I am with the contracting company BNA Construction LLC, where the general contractors for this project at 16 River Street in Braintree, Mass. I'm the construction supervisor for this project. Tonight, I'm being accompanied by Jim Thornhill. He's the architect of record for this project. He's with Applied Form and Space out of Andover, Mass.
Mister Thornhill, just raise your hand, please.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Mister Sandy Hovey, he is the executive director of Public Guardian Services, the occupant of this facility. And also Mister Peter Macy, he is the executive director of Guardian Community Trust. They are the parent trust organization in oversight of the construction for this project.
Thank you, sir.
Gentlemen, I'd like to take just about five minutes and give you a little background of this project so that we can get a full scope as to what we're looking to achieve here. This building located at 16 River Street, this was purchased last fall by this nonprofit organization, Guardian Community Trust. They are a privately funded nonprofit organization, and they focus on providing guardianship for incapacitated individuals in the community. The purpose of purchasing this building is to supply their social workers with office space to manage the guardianship needs of their clients, as well as to meet with their clients was to assess their needs. During the purchase of this property, there were a few concerns that were raised by the building assessor that would require some investigation. So we acquired back in the winter demolition permit from the, from the, from Russell, the town building inspector, so that we could do some selective demo to assess the needs of this building. It was established that during, during this selective demo, that the, the building was just in need of some structural remediation. The standards that were implemented at the time of the construction of this building, and they posed some structural issues that needed to be addressed, such as the roof rafters needed to be upsized, some of the floor structure needed to be reframed, and the largest issue was the front porch that was being used as two office spaces, as two offices they needed to be rebuilt from the ground up, including the foundation. So as we were addressing these structural issues, our architect of record, Jim Thornhill, he was finalizing the interior layout, and two serious needs were established, requiring us to go before you gentlemen here this evening on the board for relief. First issue was that in the original design, it called out for a ramp to be built on the backside of the building so that the impaired clients could gain access to the building. However, due to the elevation of the building, it would require the ramp to be approximately 55 feet long with a couple of switchbacks. This raised real concern for the board of trustees, and they, they had a feeling on it. They felt that, you know, how could we possibly ask a veteran who just came back from Afghanistan with possibly a damaged leg, who needs physical care and has come to us for that care, now we're going to ask them to go up a 55-foot ramp in the dead of winter with possible snow and ice on it? They just felt that this wasn't kind, it wasn't considerate, and we, and we should investigate any possible option to ease the access of the building for those who were mobility impaired. And they, they were even, they even felt that even if it involved an additional cost, this was definitely something that was important enough to the board of trustees to investigate this. So at a rather high additional cost to them, they asked our architect, Jim Thornhill, to design a second option, that of eliminating the ramp in the back of the building and installing a small interior lift that would be covered from the elements. However, there are a couple of things to note regarding the change from having this ramp to this enclosed space. The first is the footprint of the lift is actually quite a bit significantly smaller than what the ramp would have taken up in the back. And if we were going to pursue this ramp as we had initially decided, we wouldn't have to come before the ZDA because the ramp falls within the approval egresses of the town. Also, eliminating the ramp, it allows us to really maintain the character of the neighborhood because the reality is, is even though this building falls within the general building district, the GBD, it's really on the edge of a neighborhood, a residential neighborhood. And the board of trustees was very concerned about being able to maintain a, a very accommodating, welcoming facade to the exterior of the building. The second hardship that was identified was that due to the COVID-19 outbreak, the original floor plan was really not conducive. The occupational risk assessor, they established that the proposed floor plan and conference room really did not allow enough space to properly protect the social workers and the clients so as to mitigate any spread of COVID-19. So once again, Jim was asked to go back to the drawing board and establish a new plan that would properly protect the health of the employees and also that of the clients. See, the major issue i- is that, that needs to be addressed, is that the conference room is really just too small, and there's not enough room for someone who is in need of the assistance of a wheelchair to get around in the conference room accompanied by whoever they may need and achieve a safe distance. So now, we're not saying that there's going to be a steady stream of visitors in and out of the building at all hours of the day, coming in for meetings. However, that is the nature of the services that this nonprofit organization provides. They, they cater to those who are mobility impaired, to those who are veterans, to those who are cognitive impaired. And there are going to be just some individuals who do not have the ability to meet in their homes, and they will need to come to the office. So after these issues were identified, this triggered, triggered the need to increase the size of the conference room, which is really absolutely necessary in order to accommodate the needs of the community in the area. Now, I'd like to introduce Jim Thornhill, who can, who can go over and take just one minute, any, any highlights of the plans for you gentlemen, and then I'd like to field any questions that you, you gentlemen may have, but only easy ones.
Thank you, sir. Mister Thornhill?
Thank you. I, I appreciate what a quick meeting you've conducted, so I don't want to take any more of your time. I think Josh has done a great job summarizing. I just want to say that, given the character of the existing building when it was purchased, there's something that we were really drawn to, and we did our best in, it was actually closer to eight schemes that we worked through before we got to this point. We really wanted to maintain the character of the building. And the porch on the front that we're hoping to reconstruct, what we're proposing is really just a increased kind of a stylized version of that. The side porch that we're adding in to replace the existing side porch was everything we're doing is trying to maintain a certain scale, a certain character of the project. Unfortunately, what we found through these various schemes is that the building was just too tight for the, what ultimately wound up to be the program for the, for the, for the client.
Did, how did you solve the conference room problem?
Well, we're solving, we're hoping to solve it by increasing the depth of it. We're matching the width of the existing enclosed porch, but we're increasing the front, we're building closer to the front property line, hopefully.
And I saw, I just saw a photograph of, I guess, proposed solar, solar panels on the roof.
Yes. Guardian Community Trust, ourselves and Josh and BNA Construction, part of what we're doing here, we're trying to accomplish is to make this as energy efficient as possible. And along with essentially what's turned into a gut rehab, we're very much increasing the insulation value of the walls, exterior walls, basement and roof rafters. We're completely providing a new HVAC system, hopefully a geothermal system, and also part of that is hopefully a photovoltaic system to be mounted on the roof as well, too.
I find that interesting, like this old house. One, one more question about operation. Do you have staff attorneys on, on your staff? Because you, I saw guardianship and conservatorship, so you must have some attorneys filing petitions.
I, I can allow, Peter's nodding yes. Peter himself is an attorney, but Peter Macy, he is the CEO of Guardian Community Trust. He could, he could certainly answer that better than I.
Peter?
Yes, we do. Thank you for the question.
You're gonna have to talk a little closer, I can't hear you.
I think I'm still unmute.
No?
Yeah, unmute yourself, Peter.
There, okay, now can you hear me?
Yeah, now I can.
Yes, we do have staff attorneys. Not, how do I explain this? One other part of the work is to support family guardians whenever possible. And so we're going to have two legal services attorneys who've been doing guardianship for 30 years, who both happen to live on the South Shore, are going to have offices, although they won't actually work for Public Guardian Service. They're part of the larger team of advocates and stakeholders, and they will be on site three days a week each. And they're both older than me, if you can believe that. And I'm actually much older than I look, but they're, they're, they're going to be doing work with families, which is another piece of, it's another reason that these requested variances would be really helpful, is because there will be opportunities to bring family members to, to trainings on the site, and having the conference room that we need in order to, to work with them would be incredibly important to the use and to the need. There will be very few of the clients or on-site, most of the social workers' work is done offsite, and, and that's why the parking is so wonderful, because they can come and go during the day, which they will be doing, visiting people in hospitals, at homes, in nursing homes. And we are basically taking care of the indigent. The, the probate and family court is actually calling itself our partner, which is wonderful, meaning that they're fully cooperating with, with the work that Sandy is doing, you know, with his background, 15 years of work in protective services. So it's going to be a very solid, reputable contributor to the community. Good people will be coming and going, and the, the probate court is just excited as possible. They, they issued a press release in, in July announcing the opening of, of Public Guardian Service, which is presently operating out of rented facilities on Wood Street, Wood Avenue.
You mean the probate court general offices or?
Yeah, the administrative, the, the chief justice is, is, has met with us and has encouraged this. And this is really, this is a pilot program, which we're hoping to show will be successful in every respect, including community relations, so that we can show the court that this can be done, and hopefully eventually attracts some public dollars to support public guardianship as well as, as guardianship oversight.
It sounds like a terrific service you're providing.
Thank you, thank you.
I don't think, Mike, Richie, any questions?
Not a question, but maybe an observation, because we're going to be looking for a variance on this. It's a pretty squared-off lot and level. The applicant did mention geothermal applications there, and I think unfortunately, there is a ton of ledge in that location, which would speak to the, to the soil conditions. So to, as far as for granting a variance, all for it. The expensive undertaking to get through all that ledge over there, though, I think. The, the PV on the roof is a, is a great idea, though. So, and we're all for it.
Yes, sir. Mister Becker?
Yes, there's, there's two avenues that we were investigating. We met with Bill Wenzel, the geothermal engineer, to see what we could come up with for an option on that. And then the second one was using a new state-of-the-art Mitsubishi air handler unit that would, air recovery unit, it, it, it's fantastic stuff. So in conjunction with what Jim has proposed to use closed cell ISO signing on the exterior walls and the, the roof lid with these, with these makeup air units, it would, we're hoping to reduce the operational cost of the building down significantly.
Don't leave me hanging. How does the Mitsubishi unit work?
Well, it's the, it's this, it's fundamentally the same as, as any heat pump. It draws out the, the inert energy in the air, it re, it recirculates it, and it, and it energizes it and heats up the, the energy.
It's a bifurcated unit, provides air conditioning and heat.
It does, yep.
I know, we have one. Not Mitsubishi, but.
Yeah. Yeah, the, the technology that they've come up with nowadays is absolutely fantastic. And the cost of operation, operating them, we won't even need to have gas in the building. That's, that's how.
No, it runs by electricity, right?
Yeah, it's all run by electricity heat pump units.
Yeah, good, because Bell needs the money.
Yes, we do, Steve.
To be clear, we are, we did have to postpone the geothermal concept to a future date, mostly because of the, the timing and the delay to get it in place, and we hope at a future time to come back to you with that idea. We're just hearing remarkable things about its, its plausibility, so we're, we're off board if we can do it.
Well, as Mike indicated.
It's an actual idea. I'm just, I'm just trying to justify a variance more than anything here. I'm not questioning the technology behind geothermal. I am trying to, to give some type of a reasoning to grant a variance.
John breaks over a marble head. Sorry about that.
But as Mike indicated, we, Braintree has a lot of ledge.
Yeah.
And a, a lot of other types of soil that aren't that conducive for building, but I don't know how you get through the ledge other than drilling or, I don't want to use the term, the B-term, but.
Yeah.
That being said, all right. Tim, Gary, any, any comment or questions? You have to unmute yourself, Tim.
I'm fine.
Okay, Gary?
I have no questions.
Okay. Who's the, who's the chief justice of the probate court now?
His name is John Casey.
Casey.
He, you may know him, he was in, he was in Norfolk for many years.
Yeah, I'm glad, I'm glad I'm out of that racket, believe me. Richie knows. All right, that being said, Connor, I'll ask if there, if there is anyone else in favor that wants to record themselves in favor?
I don't see anyone.
No one. Is there anyone opposed?
No.
No, we don't see anyone. So we'll close the public portion of the hearing. Gentlemen, thank you all for taking part in this. Now we'll get to the meat and potatoes, so to speak. Mike or Richie, any comment or any?
This, the application and the drawings on this really cleans up and, and, for lack of a better term, modernizes that building. And it, it is kind of a, a cross between a residential area and, you know, literally steps outside of Braintree Square. So it's a nice transition, and the design they have for that front porch, I think, will really add to the neighborhood.
I, I also noticed that there is a garage back there that we approved as a contractor's garage. They store some vehicles in there, not huge ones, but some vehicles in there, if I'm not mistaken, across from your building?
Across from the building.
Yes, Mister Becker?
Oh, across from our building?
Yeah, on the side.
Yes, across from the building, there are some, some storage units over there. I, I didn't know that they were holding cars.
Well, the contractors like trucks.
Yeah.
Not big, not huge 18-wheelers, but smaller ones. And if I remember, I thought I saw a picture of a cemetery. Is that true?
Right.
There's a cemetery in the back. No complaints from the occupants of that.
We looked for a place where there would be few people to complain, and this, this came up on the list.
Yeah. Okay, well, does someone want to try to word the motion so that we can make it conform?
I would make a motion. I'm sorry?
Could I just interrupt for one second? There's just two points I want to make. First is the handicap ramp in the back is actually covered by chapter 48, section 3. It's handicap access, therefore it does not have to follow either the zoning bylaws, or does it require a special permit for the buffer in town of Braintree within the zoning bylaws? When you're in a general business or commercial district and you abut a Residence B district, which the cemetery is zoned, red. and you abut a Residence B district, which the cemetery is zoned Residence B, it requires a special permit for buffer. In this case, Chapter 48, Section 3 allows the applicant to waive the provisions of the open space buffer.
Come again, the cemetery is a Residence B?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, I'm not going there. Okay.
I know, I know. And that's really it. There have been some discussions with the applicant in regards to parking. I would like to note that before they purchased the building, it was considered as office. I've gone through assessors' records and the building file. At this point, the parking will be considered nonconforming. Therefore, since they're not really increasing the space, at this point, since the parking is nonconforming, they're not required to seek a variance for the parking.
All right, Mr. Becker, are you putting in? I thought you did away with the ramp and you're putting in a lift.
We are, but it's all egress space, it's not really.
No, 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 I'm just curious.
Yeah, we'd like to really do away with the ramp and just make it more comfortable for people to get in and out of the building. I mean, it's a height to ask someone to go up.
A lift is a little more expensive, is it not?
Oh, it's dramatically more expensive. However, the public guardianship feels that that's well worth it to make it more comfortable for the elderly and the handicapped to gain access to the building.
No, I would agree with them, but as I say, it's their money. They spend it the way they want. We're just interested in conforming. Mike, you were gonna make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the variance based on the soil conditions with the finding that the proposal is not more detrimental to the neighborhood based on submitted plans and with staff's recommendations.
Motion's been made and seconded by Mr. McDonough. We'll take the role, Mr. Ford.
Aye.
Mr. McDonough?
Aye.
Steve Carl?
Aye.
Your petition is approved, subject to your plans as stated and with the conditions added into by the planning department. And we wish you good luck down there. I think your service that you're providing is well needed.
You squeezed as much humor out of this meeting as anybody could. It's been a delight.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome to come back in 30 days, if you'd like.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, take care. You're all free to leave the meeting, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, I want to thank you all, my board, for attending tonight. Connor, thank you for all that you do. It's well appreciated. I know by every member of our board. And Steve Larry at the mayor's office, thanks for helping out with the Zoom. Again, it's appreciated. It wouldn't work the way it does without your help and Connor's help. Any other comment from anybody?
Nope.
Approve anything?
No, the only thing besides for the two dumb comments I'm about to make are, you do have to make a motion to close the meeting.
Yeah.
One, I'm looking for, it's over there. Our next meeting is October 26th. We will have four more petitions for that month. So it should be fairly quick. They're pretty, I think they're all single-family dwellings. I have to go back and look, but I'm pretty sure they're all single families. So, pretty straightforward stuff next month.
Well, okay, then, do I hear a motion to close the meeting?
Also, most meetings.
Motion's been made and seconded. We have to take a roll call vote?
If you'd like.
Well, why not? I enjoy, this is my cup of tea. I'm gonna start from my left. Mike Ford?
Aye.
Tim Burke?
Aye.
Rich McDonough?
Aye.
Gary Walker?
Aye.
And myself, Steve Carl, yes. Aye. Gentlemen, again, thank you, I appreciate everything you guys do and my board. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's a pleasure. It's my pleasure working with you guys. Thank you very much.
Stay healthy.
Yeah, stay healthy, everyone.